I call the regular meeting of the Stevens County Planning Commission for May 6, 2025, to order. I've asked Cody Cobb to open us and we'll board a prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just bring you all the honor, glory, and praise for this day. We thank you for your love and your protection. We ask now that you be with us and give us level heads, open minds, and open hearts to let us do what is best for this community. Again, we give you all the honor, glory, and praise. Forgive us of our sins where we fall short. In all the things we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
All right, we'll begin with a roll call.
Chairman Scott Stroud.
Here.
Vice Chairman Brett Ivester. Commissioner Cody Cobb.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Randall.
Here.
Commissioner Dennis Black.
Moving on to approve the agenda. Everybody's got a copy of the meeting in their packet. Anybody see any changes need to be made?
A motion.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion. Okay, the meeting minutes from the last meeting, April 1, 2025, meeting. Work session and the regular meeting. Was that April 1? It was. Everybody should have a copy of those.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Anybody see any changes need to be made to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second. All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Meeting. Okay, move into the regular, the regular part of the meeting. Christian?
Okay, we will now begin the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have five items scheduled tonight. We will call each of those items sequentially. When the items are up, we will first begin by calling for those wishing to speak in favor of each item. Those wishing to speak in favor will have up to 10 minutes to speak. We'll have a timer there on the screen. When you see that read zero, we ask that you kindly wrap up your thoughts. We will ask you for your name and address. Following from those wishing to speak in favor, we will then call for those wishing to speak in opposition. They will have the same time period and will follow the same standards as we do for those wishing to speak in favor. Following from that, at the discretion of the Planning Commission, a three-minute rebuttal can be provided for any property owner that wishes to speak. Are there any questions or comments as to how the public hearing will go tonight? Okay, and apologies in advance. I'm fighting a bit of a cold, so. Okay, with that being said, let's go ahead and begin. Our first item of business is a variance request from Virginia Herring, 341 Williams Circle, Tacoa, parcel 051011. The property is currently zoned as agricultural intensive. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a lot-size variance, less than 10 acres, for 4.47 acres. Previous zoning history, on November 23, 2021, the property was granted a conditional use permit to be utilized as a wedding venue and for other such events. Due to the transfer of the property, this conditional use permit has expired and the use is now illegal, non-conforming use. This 5.53-acre parcel that they are looking to parcel off is required so that there's no breach in the continuation of a conservation use valuation assessment assigned to the property under Georgia law. The CUVA covers only the approximately 50 acres solely intended for agricultural purposes. The property is expansive and the location being requested to split and grant a lot-size variance for is already in use and has already been granted conditional approval in the past under previous ownership. Additionally, because the conditional use permit was granted to the previous owners and according to Section 59-1807 of the Land Use Ordinance, a conditional use permit is non-transferable except at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, and instead, the conditional use becomes illegal, non-conforming use in accordance with the ordinance. The applicant is also requesting transfer of the conditional use permit as previously granted. With that being said, recommendation from the staff is to approve of the variance request and also approve of the transfer of the conditional use permit as detailed by Section 59-1807 of the Land Use Ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
So the property will remain AI, great.
Yes, sir.
So this is just a variance for a lot size, okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number one is closed.
Okay, we'll just take these one at a time. Okay. Any further questions from the board? Comments? Not, not all. Entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item number two. This is a variance request from Linden 66 Christie's Path Drive, East Nolly, parcel 044189. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to allow for an additional fourth home off of an existing Presently, three homes utilize the existing easement, 10 Christie's Path, 29 Christie's Path, and 66 Christie's Path. On March 12, 2025, staff approved a survey allowing for division to track two in the rear of the property. The easement through the property was existing, but an additional home cannot be built off that easement without a variance. According to Section 66-4 of the subdivision ordinance, requires that no more than three homes may be allowed off one easement per lot, parcel, or track. Thus, a variance would be required to allow an additional fourth home off of the existing easement. Recommendation from staff is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Planning Commission? Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item?
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carolyn Pace, and I live at 29 Christie's Path Drive. And notice says that an additional home, does that mean a single family?
The property is zoned residential single, so they would be allowed to place either a single-family residential brick-built structure or manufactured home.
Later, would you have to come back?
Yes, ma'am. Any additional home off that easement would require a variance.
Driveway, if that proved not to be adequate, what would happen then?
So the county doesn't regulate the easements themselves. We just allow for the creation of an easement or the homes off. In essence, it's a private driveway. If there was an issue with that, that would be a dispute between property owners. Would you mind speaking into the mic? I'm so sorry.
Three homes, the most he could put on that property as it stands right now?
Well, three homes off of that easement would be the most he could place right now.
Yeah, if this is what he owns here, it's only two acres. It's a one-acre minimum, so I don't think he would get a, I don't think he would get a third home. I mean, he could apply for a variance, but one acre is the minimum, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number two is closed.
Any further questions, comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, got a motion and a second. All in there, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is a rezoning request from Scott Morgan, 810 Stovall Farm Road, Martin, parcel 067F008. The property is currently zoned as agricultural intensive. The proposed action to be taken is to rezone 2.02 acres from the subject property to agricultural residential for personal agricultural and residential use. The property itself is very large at 98.35 acres. The portion suggested for rezoning would front a small neighborhood of residential properties off Lakeside Hills Road. Rezoning to AR would actually provide a buffer in that area between the agricultural intensive activity to the north, promoting personal agricultural use in conjunction with the existing residential single property to the south. Staff does believe that a rezoning to AR would be an appropriate zoning and would establish an important land use buffer in the area. With that being said, recommendation is to approve as requested. Is there any comment from the Planning Commission? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number three is closed.
Further questions, comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. All right, got a motion and a second. All in there, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item number four. This is a variance request from Douglas and Donna Guest, 1343 Jordan Road, Tacoa, parcel 032D055. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to allow for an accessory structure within the front yard. The property owners would like permission to keep a 16-by-40 accessory structure within the front yard of their property. After pulling the permit for electrical, the county building inspector noticed the accessory structure was placed within the front yard in violation of county ordinances. According to Chapter 59, Article 16, Section 59-1610, accessory buildings and uses shall be permitted only inside of rear yards, and thus, a variance will be required to allow for the accessory structure to remain within the front yard. The accessory structure is located approximately eight feet in front of the principal structure on site, and there is a significant vegetative buffering between where this accessory structure is placed and the property immediately to the right of the subject property. The property itself is almost four acres, and generally, low intensive uses such as this may be granted variances if they do not constitute an adverse effect upon the neighborhood. If there's no concern with right-of-way or utility infrastructure or other such concerns, that would garner opposition from the county or surrounding neighbors. With that being said, recommendation from staff is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Planning Commission? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone in opposition? All right, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number four is closed.
Further questions, comments, or I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in there, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item number five is a conditional use request from Forever Faithful Investments LLC, 3023 East Silver Shoals Road, Tacoa, parcel 064C012. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to allow for the property to be utilized as a men's sober living facility. As far as zoning history is concerned, on July 27, 2021, the property was rezoned from commercial general to residential single. The subject property is about 1.57 acres and is zoned for residential use. The property is detailed as lots 2D and 2E in Section 1 of the Currie Point subdivision, which is located on Lake Hartwell. With this, the property is located in a private subdivision that includes lots greater in density than those that may be seen in more rural areas of the county. Section 59-1808 details the criteria to consider for conditional uses. Among such criteria includes the following: Off-street parking and loading facilities are adequate in terms of location, amount, and design. The amount and location of open space and the provisions of screening is such that buffering for incompatible uses is achieved. Hours and manners of operation of the proposed are not inconsistent with adjacent and nearby uses. The proposed use will not have a significant adverse effect on the level of property values or the general character of adjacent land uses or the general area. The physical conditions of the site, including size, shape, topography, and drainage, are suitable for the proposed development. The property does have adequate off-street parking, having been previously utilized as a restaurant. However, the location itself is now zoned for residential use, and there is some concern that the operation of a men's sober living facility on the site could have an adverse effect on the general character of the neighborhood and in the general area, which is aforementioned as historically consisted of dense, single-family residences and a residential development. Section 59-1808 of the code states that the proposed use should be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan of the county. The property is located within the watershed protection overlay district of the 2021 Stevens County Comprehensive Plan. This district is defined by the variety of lake and riverfront development that permeates the north and eastern sides of Stevens County. It's also defined as a prime recreational resource and destination for seasonal travelers and tourists, and as such, development forms within the district are advised to remain sparsely developed and may include public and private parks with an emphasis on passive uses. Excuse me. A subdivision is typically not the most appropriate location for a men's sober living facility, and placing this facility within the watershed protection overlay district is, staff believes, counterintuitive to the values of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. Based on the character areas determined in the Comprehensive Plan and the criteria to consider for conditional uses, staff does recommend that the conditional use application be denied and that the business would more closely align with suburban service area character area for which potential for higher density or mixed-use developments exists, which in the area also specifically emphasizes more regional-scale commercial, service, and institutional use. With that being said, recommendation from staff is to deny the application. Are there any questions or comments from the Planning Commission? Okay, all right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. My name is Ashley Bonds, and I am part-owner of Forever Faithful Investments, as well as my husband and I are the founders of REM Sober Living. It's important to note that this is not a rehab facility. This is simply a place for people who are looking for a healthy home and healthy soil to go back to. Our people who have come through our program before have already went through a rehab or are sat or something of that nature. They have been sober, and if they return home to the, to the environment that they came out of, it's often a toxic environment. It's surrounded by drug homes. It's surrounded by, you know, the drug dealer knows where to find them. So we create a safe space for them to live. It would be much like if they were a duplex or apartment living. So I just wanted to put that out there. We are not a rehab. We do not offer any kind of medical help. We do, however, have a full-time facilities manager who has spent 20 years in law enforcement. He worked for Cornelia PD as a detective and inspector. He's seen the worst of the worst, so if he needed to handle a situation, he is fully equipped to do so. He is actually here tonight, Mr. Shane Adams. We believe God has the ability to heal anyone and everyone, regardless of what their disease is, because the Word of God says, "I came to heal every disease," not every disease besides addiction. And we believe that makes our community safer, stronger, healthier. Families are being rebuilt. We have watched men's lives go from weren't sure if they were going to have a place to live, weren't sure if they were going to have food on the table, weren't sure how to be a father, had abandoned their kids, to now they are thriving. They're business owners. They're productive members of society. They're wonderful fathers. They're wonderful members of their community, of our church. They serve and they give back. We are not like a lot of sober livings where you come in, you do your time, you go out, we never check on you again. We've become a family. We love these men very much. So when it's, when you say "single family," this is their family. This is some of the family that they, that's all they have. Everyone else has abandoned them and given up on them, and we just refuse. Jesus didn't give up on me in my darkest hours, when I was lost, when I was broken, when I was hopeless, when I was sinning six ways from Sunday. He didn't give up on me. He came to my rescue every single time, and He demands us to do the same, to give away what we've been given. So that is our goal. That is what we want to do. I'm going to read our mission statement. It says, "REM Sober Living, we believe Jesus has paved the way for the addicted to be set free," from Psalms 103 and 3. "The facility bridges the gap between institutional facilities and return to the secular world. Oftentimes, people attend rehab, get clean, and return to the same toxic environment. As a result, relapse happens. Our goal is to offer a safe place for participants to live as they re-acclimate with the secular world, teaching them how to thrive in sobriety and repair relationships along the way." I've already mentioned one of our safety protocols is we do have Shane on-site full-time. He was Cornelia PD. We have had 100% success rate. People that have graduated from our program have not went back to drugs. That's unheard of, and it's only by His power. We don't take any credit for that. But we refuse federal funding. We refuse state funding because they want you to take Jesus, the Word of God, prayer out of it, and that's not a compromise we're willing to make for some money. It is a three-praise program. We don't allow any violent criminals into the program. We are very, very selective. It's not somebody who just needs three hots and a cot. These people are coming to do some work. They want their life back. They want to be who God created them to be. They do not have access to their cell phone. They do not have access to a vehicle. They have to attend daily meetings, weekly counseling sessions, all of this. For the first six months, they are not allowed to contact anyone outside of the facility manager allowing them to do so. We are very selective who is allowed to enter the property. We have a certified visitation lift. It's obviously our volunteers from our ministry, and then if it's like a son, his mother, or if he has like kids, they're allowed to come visit. They have scheduled times. They have a limit of time. It's, it's very, very structured and restrictive because they are learning how to re-acclimate. They are learning how to be who God called them to be. They are learning how to love themselves. A lot of addiction, if, if some of you don't know, addiction is birthed out of trauma, so we heal, we help heal the trauma. We have the Potter's House Counseling Center, Matthew Moat, who comes and he does individual counseling with these men. He is board-certified. He went to Liberty University. He has a master's in professional counseling. He has an undergraduate in criminal justice. He's been doing this since 2008, inpatient and outpatient. So once they leave our facility, they still have that access to him to continue their journey of healing. So I'll say this. Before I started working with people in addiction, I came from the opposite side of it. My dad was an abusive alcoholic, and my mom had a gambling addiction, and I was a lost little girl. And if there would have been someone to save my dad and to put him through something like this so that he could get the help and the healing he needed, we wouldn't have faced what we faced. We wouldn't have faced the abuse. And to look at my dad, he wouldn't have known. He was a functioning addict. He went to work every day. He was a productive member of society, but at home, he was a totally different person, and it was because he was so lost and broken. And my dad has received healing through this. So I would just ask that y'all would seek the Lord and let Him speak to your heart before you make your final decision. And He really dealt with me because I was bitter, and I thought that once they became an addict, there was no hope. But He showed me there's hope. If there was hope for me, there's hope for anybody, and that their sin was not worse or my sin was not better than theirs. And since just answering the call to help heal these families, because I deal with the family side of it, I've got the honor of watching these people's lives be restored and watching mothers get their sons back and wives get their husbands back and daddies get their fathers back. And there is no greater joy than to see God do what He does and to be a small part of that. And I truly believe that if we choose yes on this, that we can eradicate addiction in our area and build stronger families. I believe God is powerful enough to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Joshua Soscher. Thank you so much for giving me time to speak. I have something prepared real quick. Did we reset the timer?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It's 10 minutes per person?
Yes.
I'm just going to read this so I stay on time. "It was in 2014. I was 19 years old, in prison, and I tried methamphetamines for the first time. For the next six years, my life was completely unhinged and uncontrollable. I desired to be a good person but had no idea how to become that. In my addiction, I became quite the opposite, eventually hurting everyone I came in contact with. During that time, I got engaged, and we had our first child. I wanted to be a loving husband and father but wasn't sure how to get there. In 2018, I was arrested for drug charges, and once my son was one month old, I turned myself in and continued my drug addiction and incarceration. This cycle continued until March 14, 2020, when I started the Sober Living Program. In the past, I attended and graduated from multiple drug counseling programs, but those were like putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. They, that only brought temporary sobriety but never focused on the root issues. During my time at the Sober Living, it challenged me and changed me in many ways, mostly in my character. Dustin and Ashley Bonds saw me at my worst with needle holes in my arm and showed me nothing but unwavering love and compassion, even during times of my rebellion and stubbornness. They had patience and love to not let me stay in my broken emotions. I am now married and a father of two amazing sons. I am a leader in a ministry and travel to share my testimony and preach the gospel. I help walk people out of the same darkness that held me bound for many years. I can honestly say, without the Sober Living Program, I would either be dead or imprisoned again. My family, my family and I are eternally grateful for the Sober Living Program. I truly believe that many more men and their families will be transformed and restored through this program." As I said, as Ashley Bond said, this isn't a rehab. Rehabilitation centers just try to get you sober enough just so you can pass the drug test. This program is focused on the broken source of where the addiction comes from. It's just a fruit that is tied to a root. And without that root ever being dealt with and dug up and healed and made whole, because he says he's coming to make us whole, without that opportunity and safe space for that opportunity to be introduced to family, because I didn't know what that was. But without that safe space for these men to come in and be whole, how can they be a productive anything in this community? Because it's not going away. This community is, is known for, and that's not talking against anything, but there's a solution, and, and, and we just want to be a part of that solution. So thank y'all so much for letting me speak. I'm honored to be here. Thank y'all so much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Jody Rogers. I'm actually the original one to go through the Sober Living. When I entered into the Sober Living, I was a broken man. I had an addiction to methamphetamines. And like my brother Josh just said, I'd went through different types of counseling, different type of programs, and several other different things to try to straighten my life up. When I came, I was homeless, had a drug addiction, and was without hope. I really didn't even have much of a reason to live anymore. But entering into it, it really changed my life. The focus was not to try to rehabilitate my addiction. The focus was to, why did I have the addiction in the first place? Throughout the programs, throughout the sessions, throughout the teachings, throughout the counseling, I've come to realize that the drug addiction was just the tip of the iceberg. It was just the top part of what manifested physically. But I was dealing with abandonment and rejection issues from my childhood. And growing up, I grew up a very, very bitter man. I was someone who was always in trouble. I spent multiple years in prison and never could understand why I was always so angry and so bitter, until I started walking through this program to show me what it was in my life. First of all, I was missing Jesus in my life. So allowing Jesus to come in, He started to reshape my heart, retrain my mind, and all these different things to make me a better person. And then finally walked out of addiction. I went in in 2018. I'm still sober to this day, and I know that it wouldn't be possible without giving all glory to God, but also giving glory to the family that I found. Like my sister Ashley said, my family had literally turned their back on me and had every reason to. I had nowhere to go, had nowhere to turn to, had no hope. But in this, I found a true family. And there was even one time that I was in a session and was actually shown love as opposed to where I figured like the world would want to kick me when I was down. I figured like the world would want to keep me when I was down. But I wasn't. I was showed love. I didn't understand it. I didn't understand why somebody was saying, hey, I'm not gonna turn my back on you, then I'm gonna help walk this out with you. I didn't understand what family was. But like I said, I've been sober. Not only that, I have been married to my wife. For, um, we actually gonna celebrate our four-year anniversary, uh, later this month. I have three loving kids that live at home with me. I have two other. I just had my first granddaughter. On top of that, I've actually, just this past year, bought my first vehicle that I didn't need a cosigner for and recently just got approved for a loan for a house. So would all that be possible without what I went through with the sober living? Absolutely not. Because I would still be somewhere if I was alive. I'd either be strung out on drugs still. I would be in prison or worst case scenario, I wouldn't be alive at all. I was on a fast track to hell and I was sending myself there and I didn't care. But it took everything that I walked through, every step that God had put before me for me to walk this out. And so I truly, with every part of my being, believe in this. I'm a walking, living testimony that this works. And I know from others that I've seen go through it, I've helped be there for them. I've helped been a voice to them. And I've helped walk them out of things when they've had hard times. And even still to this day, I still help them. Just because they graduated doesn't mean it stopped. Those lifelong bonds that I have with people that live in other states that I talk to about once a week. And so that is a family dynamic that has been formed and keeps forming, keeps forming, keeps reproducing. Where, like I said, when I come in, I had no hope at all. So I truly, from the bottom of my heart, hope that y'all do consider approving this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Shane Adams and like, uh, Ashley explained to you earlier, I was in law enforcement for 20 years. I retired in two thousand and twenty-two and began overseeing full-time the sober living. I live on the premises with my family, my wife and two girls. Give you a little background. In my law enforcement career, uh, majority of, three quarters of it was in investigations. I worked narcotics investigations all the way up to property crimes, to sexual cases, to murders even. And with that broad range of experience and training, uh, it, it's helped with being able to manage the sober living facility, so to speak. Um, it's helped to be able to process the intake process that we go through. Cause I'm able to, uh, have a big role in that part. Cause I have a bit, like, like they said, I have a big voice in that matter just because of my experience. And we're not just gonna let anybody in the program. Like I said, I live on the property where we're currently at and I'm not gonna put my family in danger. Definitely not gonna do that for anybody else's family. So I do take it very seriously who we allow in the sober living facility. Okay? Um, I also maintain that throughout the entire program that they're in there. Okay? Like Ashley advised you, we do not let any kind of violent crime offenders in the facility whatsoever. And anything that constitutes violent while they're in there, they're automatically removed from the program. I take safety very seriously. Said, I can't stress it enough. I'm not gonna put anybody else's family in danger that I wouldn't put my own family in danger for. Okay? I have seen so many men's lives transformed through this process. And looking at it from the law enforcement side, before I started in this, I would've said you were crazy. People that's addicted, there's, there's no hope for them. They're just always gonna be that way. But I have seen through this process that that's not true. And I've seen the men that, that if they come to our program and actually say and mean that they want help and actually show the proof that they do. And it's a complete volunteer status. We don't do any kind of court orders. It's complete volunteer status. They gotta want to, want the help to be able to be a part of the sober living. So that, with that being said, it's, it's completely changed my life, my perspective on what these people go through. Just, I just wanted to ease the community's mind that I will have their back as far as safety is concerned in that community that, that we're wanting to be in. And I will not allow any kind of criminal activity afoot. I give my word on that. But thank y'all for giving me time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item?
Hey, um, my name's Naomi Haney and, um, I'm from the Toccoa area as well. Throughout this process, I have had the opportunity to, sorry, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, to get to know this couple and what their mission is. And, um, it is a lot bigger than a rehab program and so much more. From a standpoint of looking at it as a property that has been sitting vacant for a very long time and nothing really being done there. Yes, it's, is owned as a single-family residence, but it's not really set up for that. Something that Dustin shared with me and Ashley shared with me throughout this process was the previous owner, when he renovated it, he renovated it in such a way which is exactly what they were looking for. The back bedroom having a secure place for someone to stay on site and then the exact number of bedrooms and bathrooms that they were looking for and the large space that they needed for the counseling. It's just as if God plopped it there for them. And, um, I just hope you guys will consider, maybe just looking into it a little bit more, researching a little bit before you just kind of have a hard no. Um, I know the community is a little concerned as well and I understand that. But maybe just if you understand what they're doing, the bigger picture and the thought that they've put behind it and how they establish their business, that maybe you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Abigail Sosher. I am Joshua Sosher's wife. Um, he came up and spoke a while ago. I grew up knowing addiction from my family, my father, everything. And I never saw people come out, but like my family's still in addiction. My dad died from addiction. So when we got together in two thousand and sixteen, um, it just kind of got worse and worse and worse and worse. And I was just like, okay, this isn't, nothing's gonna help, you know? We got engaged. We had, I got pregnant with my first child. And it just kept getting worse and worse. Um, he ended up going to prison when my, when our son was, uh, a month old. And it was hard. I was a single mother, um, just out in the world while he was still dr- doing drugs in prison. He eventually got out a year later. Tried to be a dad, um, but it was very hard. Cause I didn't really want it around my son. Um, it was just, it was very hard. And he finally got into the sober living for, um, process and gave it all up. And that was in two thousand and twenty. We've been married for six years. Got, got married in, um, two thousand and twenty, July of two thousand and twenty. Um, we have another son now. We had him in two thousand and twenty-two. But what I'm trying to say is just, it's an amazing, amazing program. I mean, I was on the outside looking in, you know? As in like looking at him and watching him grow and it helped me grow. And he's taught me how to be a better parent. Um, it's, it's just, and I've seen all the other men too, like Jody and we have, um, we have two others that have went through the process. And I've watched them come home to their family, to their mother, like, and they were hopeless. And I've seen all this. And I just hope that y'all can hear us and that your hearts aren't hardened to this. That's, that's what I got.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item?
Hey, my name's Dustin Bonds. I'm ten forty Crenshaw Road, Martin, Georgia. Thank y'all for, uh, taking this moment. We didn't ask for this call. Um, we, uh, were directed. One thing we always, uh, when we're together, we reiterate is if the Lord has told us to do it, what will happen if we don't? Or what won't happen if we don't? And, uh, I stand on that today. In this, uh, a lot of times when you look at addiction, um, you see many cycles. I know in that from being on both sides. Um, I grew up in a drug home. I didn't have a choice. Two months before I turned twenty-one, I took my first drink. If I remember anything when I was little, my dad said one addiction will lead to the next. Before I know it, I was strung out on pills real bad. Two thousand and thirteen, I encountered the Lord, Banks County Jail. I surrendered my life. Um, and from then, I mean, I have not even took NACWA. I graduated from Jackson County Drug Court, chose to go through it. I knew something else had to be different. Even the lady that was intaking me said, look, you know, this is choice to go in it. And I said, no, the Lord said this is where I must be. My point being is I've been on both sides. I understand when it comes to a community, we want a solution. I know, I know everybody in this room wants a solution because everybody is affected by addiction, whether it's in your family or not, whether you ever used or not. That's one thing we see. When I first started off, I thought it was me with the only problem. What I mean by that is when addiction takes over an individual, it hits a family, even if nobody else is used and everybody must heal. And only the Lord can do that. And, um, in the process of that, when we look at what we bring to the community or want to bring and what the Lord has showed us, I know there's rehabs in this, um, in this city or in this region. I know there's different help in this region. We are a hundred percent no kind of, we don't want to alter any kind of addiction. A lot, a lot of times I've seen with, you know, the, not so much the government, but just different facilities will okay to say, go to certain drugs and then people are on those drugs the rest of their life. And we believe in the power of God. We've seen it, y'all. I've seen lives change. I'm a living testimony of it. And my brother's in law enforcement and I got to stand probably five months ago and say, look, my brother got his brother back. And he looked up to me because he's the little brother. We want to come in because different ones have their part. We all have our part. We don't think we have all the solution. We're connected to the one with the solution. In regards to that, we want to be able to partner with somebody, not somebody that is looking for a cycle. This has cost us everything. We've already bought the property by faith. We've already took that step because God told us to take that step. Everybody said, go through this, this and this. And we started the process and I heard the Lord speak audibly. He said, buy the property. Forever Faithful Investments, literally as a holding company. We've never took a penny from the ministry as a whole. I'm not against salaries to, to ministries or anything like that. We have a business on the side. We have different properties. It's a legality thing. If somebody paid it off or we had it paid off today, it will go into R.I.M. sober living. But it's costing by faith, my wife and I, this up to this point. There has been weekly, there is people that partner with the vision, but it's not even touching what even the down payment was, not much. I just had to make the first payment. It's not about what I'm having to do. I just believe in this, y'all. I believe that we can say, okay, these people maybe are on this, this or this, like Suboxone or different things, people on methadone. We believe in the power of God and they say, hey, they can come off of this and they can be totally free from this. And we're not bringing any people that's, that's totally out there. And we believe in them. We help them. We got the church that's in where the current sober living is. But it's limited to three people. It's all it can be and max. This was the vision that God gave me because I literally, me and my wife was coming up, y'all got a good place over here to eat by the lake. We was coming up, bringing our, um, we got seven boys, um, and adopted one. My wife had Luke when we got together and I got five, um, that I've, and I'm a proud daddy. I'm a daddy first. But my point being, I said, there's a dark haze towards addiction when we pulled up to Toccoa. And I've been here many a times. I don't go unless God tells me to go because I just got my part to do. But I said, I don't know what this is, but he's, he's speaking about we must come and do a, a part. And I didn't have a clue about this property as far as sober living so much. We were incarcerated. We was literally planning to turn, build something or try to do something of land around there. And the Lord literally stopped our plans and give us this vision. So our point being of coming in here is to people coming out of R.S.A.P. R.S.A.P. is virtually like a drug court in prison. Y'all may know that. You got people that's in drug court. Um, you got people that's already in a rehab that maybe graduate and they need a place of transition as many have reiterated. So our goal is to come in and say, look, let, let's teach you how to manage your money. They're talking about cars or houses or stuff that they've been able to attain. We teach them the principles out of the Bible, how to save, how to, the importance of before you'll take and get a cor- uh, uh, you know, cornstalk to get nine hundred kernels. Uh, you gotta get rid of one and it's gotta go in to produce that. We, we teach them these principles, the understanding of communication to, and the, one of the biggest things we expound is on authority. The authority that is in the local government, you guys, um, uh, the people around the community, they have a voice. We respect the voice. And the thing is, um, I understand, I think Shane expounded on it a little bit about the concern of the location. And, and, and I think that's worth hearing. I really do because I've got seven boys. Um, and if it was something toxic, then I wouldn't want them in it. That's the whole thing we're trying to bring to the region, to the community is something that's not toxic. Cause addiction, a toxic cult, compulsive toxic behavior, it's my definition on a level. So my point being is, is we're not here to take, it's saying, we're not here to harm. We're here to help. We're here to say, hey, how can we pitch in with what's already in place and add to, to this in response? We give these guys jobs. We take, we put them, um, in, in the right environments with the right people around them. They, you know, we're not handcuffing them. They made it out of that stage. But at the same time, we have the people around to, to really teach them, say, hey, you have worth and you don't have to be what your yesterday was. And being able to walk them through that is a privilege. I'm a miracle, um, for number one, and it's only by the grace of God. There's men that's here. There's others that come from other states. He was talking about Tennessee. There's another one from another state that come all the way down here because everybody had given up hope and they're like, what about Dustin and them and what they're doing? And we had space. I have turned way more down than I've, I've let in. It's not saying they're awful. It's not saying there's not hope for them. But to thank God for the gifts of the Spirit that says there is the spirit of discernment. And you know whether people are ready or not, I've sat and I've looked at people that was even accepted and said, look, you can't hide behind your gift and manipulate yourself around what we're doing here to function. We, I can see this. And the others are, you know, by the hope, by the spirit of God, we can see this. And, um, my point being with that is we've had to tell them, many know, we're not, we're not, first thing when they go through that contract, if they're having to take any kind of substance that would alter their brain, we can't help you. There's no mind altering. I'm talking about they can't even have NACWA. Ibuprofen and Tylenol is it. That's to the degree that we watch and focus on this. Why? Because we want the other participants that are succeeding. We've got past participants that's been delivered, they're working with them, but they're just as important as their kids with them, their families around them. We see this as a whole unit, not just, not just the individual getting delivered and their life being changed. Not just their household, not just their family. And not just, you've heard of the R.I.M. family that's, that, and what I mean by that kingdom family. We're all, if we love Jesus, we're all in the same family. We're all, if we love Jesus, we're all in the same family. But also the community, um, the people that are around that their lives, because everybody, I mean, I've seen more mothers and fathers, I got 28 seconds. I knew I'd take up this whole time. Uh, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to submit to the time. But I have literally seen mothers be restored that had no hope, fathers. And it's all, number one, because the Lord Jesus Christ. And number two is because we stand together to say, you know what? It may not look from the wisdom of, 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 of logic that this would be right. But if the spirit of God is in it, what can't be done? They missed him walking on the earth realm. And I truly believe this, let's not miss this together. Because this cost me everything to be here to do what we're doing. Let's not miss it together of what God is saying, what he's wanting to do in Stevens County, Toccoa, Georgia, and North Georgia. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Yes, sir. If you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Ken Camp, 506 Shawnee Trail, in the Circle East subdivision, right around the corner from the proposed location. Okay. I've got a, a lot of questions incumbent upon this. To me, this was done kind of clandestinely. Had we not happened to walk along and see the sign in front of the cove, walking the dog, we would have never known. And this facility didn't make any effort to inform the local community that this could possibly be coming. And I'm kind of having a hard time with just the insinuation that if you're somehow against this, that, you know, you're not a Christ follower too. And God told me to use my head and my heart. And here's, you know, I've taught for 25 years. I'm a football coach. I've been a principal and I've, I'm no stranger to seeing drug addiction. You know, in fact, I spent two years dealing with, in a school with a lot of drug addiction. And so, you know, I try to use my heart as well, and I don't have any opposition to trying to help people. But, uh, first of all, you know, I've got a long history in this neighborhood and I've got a lot invested here. Um, you know, half a million dollars plus, nearly 20 years of my life, hard work, you know, saving up as a teacher to buy property there. And, um, it's a single family zone. And we've watched the struggles of the cove and we've watched, you know, people come and go there. And it's on single family. And there's literally, you know, hundreds of other locations in this county, in the middle of the woods, um, closer to town where this could go. But instead it's, you know, we're in a neighborhood where it's majority elderly and there are a lot of children in this neighborhood. And I would ask you to deny the variance because, I mean, I haven't heard the first statistic. I want to know what the recidivism rate is, not just, oh, we assure you there's no recidivism. I, you take my word on it. Well, I've lived long enough not to take words without facts. I mean, the fact of the matter is that, you know, that is a potential danger to children and the elderly. And, you know, I've worked hard to keep property values as have everybody in that subdivision. Um, we, we run the risk of a potential burglary. We run the risk of people, they said it themselves, the dealer knows where to find them. And, you know, I've dealt with enough drug addicted kids to know that they find a way. If somebody is in meth has one of the highest recidivism rates of any drug. And all it takes is one. So put it in a place that's safer and it doesn't make logical sense to me how, if you're going to drive or if you can't drive, there's nowhere to work at Circle East. Where, where are these guys going to work? There's not a lot of police patrol because it's way far out there. I know they struggle with Spring Branch. Spring Branch is about a thousand feet away. And, you know, anecdotally, I can tell you myself, I drive down there and see lots of drinking and potentially other things because people pull their boats in there. There's a potential place to get product a thousand feet away. There's a potential for DUIs. There's a potential for, you know, a lot of other things. So I'm not trying to be cold hearted. I'm just trying to be realistic because people behave how they behave. And all it takes is one recidivist thing. And the, one of the things I wanted to ask is, you know, what are the restrictions on the tenants? Do we have a set of rules on the restrictions? Do we have statistics? Do we have literature backing this up? Does the facility have liability insurance? If somebody does break into our house, are they legally liable? Is the commission legally liable if they approve this facility and we do suffer a property loss? Uh, you know, there's just too many questions. And, you know, most traditional halfway houses are located in a place where somebody can walk to work. Most traditional living facilities are located close enough to police protection. And how do we know, like, we're just not going to take on word of mouth that take my word for it. I mean, I want to see some statistics and figures. And, um, I know that the property short sold for about half of the value. So this is potentially a profitable enterprise too. So, I mean, I hate to be cynical and I do want to see the people get help. There's no doubt about that. But I think that we should stop short of just assuming that, you know, speaking for other people that have spent 20 years building a life in that location, before we just say, oh, out of the goodness of your heart, you're obligated to do this. You know, I've, I've coached kids, I've taught kids with drug addictions. I've known people, one of my best friends worked on the drug task force in Gainesville, you know, for a lot of years. And the fact of the matter is that, you know, life's messy. It isn't just a 100% cure rate. It isn't, you know, we're in a, people receive, people struggle. And those struggles don't stay relegated to one facility when they do. And, um, you know, we just got done rebuilding, losing our house and a total loss in a fire. So, you know, after struggling for two years to get back on this, now we're, you know, in another potential fight and that's frustrating. So I would ask you guys to consider not to deny the facility, but to deny the location that they've proposed.
Thank you.
Chris Saven, Jingles Ferry. Uh, it never pleases me to come before a governmental body. Um, I know the horrors of addiction, um, when we talk about lost souls. I was a lost soul at one time. That was actually the biker group I belonged to. And I wasn't part of the wrong crowd. I was the wrong crowd. The feds came in, the helicopters, the FedEx trucks, the UPSs. They were smoother than a lot of us and a lot of them are still in prison to, uh, this day. Addiction is a horrible, um, situation in our community. We also must look at our community projections of growth over the next 10 years. Nearly 60%, over 40,000 people. Uh, we have to protect our resources that are equitable to all social citizens in our recreational areas. When we look at these recreational areas, uh, next to this proposed sober living, this is where children hang out. This is where seniors hang out. Uh, any pressure on those tend to maybe push people towards other recreational areas. And so I think that every little resource that we have must be protected. And also we must vet such proposed situations. Uh, you know, when you talk about sober living, as, uh, many have said, it is not a treatment facility. There's no required individuals to provide treatment. Uh, there's no, uh, people that are, have to provide mental health treatment at such facilities. So we'll just go over a couple of things because I got another meeting, uh, in Haversham here at 7:30. Um, 40 to 60% of people who, uh, go into sober living, it's a reoccurring affair. With this, uh, there's nowhere near any government regulation involved. So we have to worry about enforcement, the proximity, uh, to police response, the health response. I appreciate, um, the individual that would provide security. But when you go to three men to 12 men, it's a lot different. Um, because I would be a tough guy to deal with if I had a relapse. I promise you that. And so in Georgia, approximately half of the identified individuals with substance abuse problems, particularly were convicted of committing violent crimes. Specifically, nearly half of those identified as having a substance abuse problem were convicted of a violent crime. Sober living, like I said, is not a treatment facility. Does not require such counselors or, uh, mental health professionals, which is really a, a product of someone with S U D. When we talk about recreational areas, the drawbacks are the proximity to recreational areas can increase the temptation to relapse, particularly for individuals who have struggled with alcohol or drug abuse in the past. When we talk about distractions and reduced focus on recovery, recreational activities and social gatherings in these areas could divert attention away from the core principles of recovery, such as attending support meetings and engaging in therapy. Social isolation, individuals in recovery may feel isolated if they cannot participate in recreational activities due to the rules and guidelines of their sober living house, due to social stigmas or exposure to witness of such locations. Econsiderations, the availability of 12-step meetings, mental health services, and other support resources in neighborhoods is crucial for the success, regardless of the proximity. And so it's not a treatment facility, it's sober living. Substance use and violence. Research consistently shows a strong link between substance use disorders and violent behavior, potential for violence. While not all individuals in recovery are violent, the presence of individuals with a history of substance use and potential for violent behavior increase the risk of incidences in sober living facilities. We're talking about a proximity to a recreational area where seniors and children swim and play and boats and everything else. In conclusion, while not all sober living facilities experience violence incidences, the potential for them exists due to the connection between substance use and violence, as well as the nature of the clientele that they serve. Studies once again suggest that large portion of individuals entertaining, entertaining treatment for substance use disorders report a history of violent acts. For instance, up to 75% of individuals starting treatment for substance use disorders have reported an engagement in physical assault, mugging, or use of weapons. This suggests that not while all sober living facilities experience violence, the potential for it exists due to the nature of the clientele. Now, we have heard that people coming out of the penitentiary system and all, and they're transitioning into it, that, you know, this could be a relapsed kind of situation. So when we look at the communities down there, I've worked in those communities down there. I live down the lake. I know the businesses that are down there. And so the equitability of the value of protecting the citizens for the future, unfortunately, is y'all's responsibility and I wouldn't want to be in y'all's shoes. So that's definitely where we got to look at that. Now, funding as such institutions. Now, I run a foundation. I do a six million dollars. I give to over 200 entities every year, charities, nonprofits, scholarships, schools, FFA, 4H, Boy Scouts, the Hope Center, the soup kitchens, benevolent funds. And, you know, and I contribute to these, but I don't do so without due diligence. And unfortunately, in 2023, the governor signed a House Bill 1073, which decreased the time to vet and for sober living in fairness down to really 45 days, when usually it would be six to nine months. And one should really have a business plan. And once you put it forth and present it to the commission, before you could really change any zoning on the issue, you have to see about the, the sustainability of it. You have to say, well, where's your money coming from? You know, where's your, where's your returns, your nonprofits? Because we don't solicit, you know, we don't, I've not taken one cent. You know, we work, we work off of dividend, dividends that are invested in the market. And so when you look at who's going to finance this though? According to my research, Forever Faithful Ministries, particularly its investment arms, is Ministry Partners Investment Companies that focuses on strengthening Christian stewardship through various financial services. This includes prudential treasury management, ethical responsibility investments, and resource for ministries and individuals to manage their wealth in a biblically based way. Now, I don't have a problem with that. I think there's hope for everyone, but there's a time and a place and a manner for it. September 25th, 2024, the Securities and Exchange Commission worked out a $30,000 penalty fine for this Ministry Partners Investment Company, LLC. So let's make sure we vet everything. I'm not against any kind of recovery for any individual in the world. I mean, I understand if they was anybody that was the worst of the worst, it's a man standing at this podium right here. And so let's do our due diligence and let's just start the clock over on the zoning issue and make sure that we approach this in the right manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the item?
First of all, I'm not against this facility. Where they're trying to place it. Middle of a residential area. Small children, elderly people. Uh, in fact, there were many that wanted to come, but they're just old, somewhere in wheelchairs. Um, the only notice that we were given that this was even going on is a small sign on the dead end road going to the boat ramp. We have worked hard for our houses. Worked hard to be able to retire and feel safe in our homes. I worked DFACS for over 15 years.
I'm sorry, ma'am. He directed comments to us.
I'm sorry. I dealt with people with drug and alcohol problems. I worked with DFACS. Tried to help a lot of people. Uh, there were a few successes, but there were a lot that went back into the old ways. It's just a fact. Uh, when you're dealing with meth and alcohol, it's very easy to get a hold of and, uh, and very easy to want to go back into it. Uh, I was with a school teacher at one time. Uh, she was a good school teacher. She had a husband and children. She lost them all. Lost every, every bit of it, her job, her, her husband. Um, and I would visit her quite often. And I drug test her and, um, and she was a good person. She was a good person, but she just couldn't do it. Our area down there, we have a lot of boaters. We have a lot of people that come down there and, uh, spread out a picnic blanket. They like to picnic. The children like to swim in the water. And, uh, there may be alcohol down there. No, there's not supposed to be alcohol down there. It's not allowed, but they do it. Um, we haven't had any problems that I know of, but, um, they're not supposed to be doing that. So it's not allowed. Um, I understand this facility, they've got a lot of checks and balances for the people that, that go into it. Uh, but let's face it, even the jails that have the best security there is, there's drugs in the jail. There's alcohol in the jail. They make their own. Um, it happens. It happens. Somebody gets hurt in our neighborhood, we're going to come back and look at you. Sorry. It, because we don't want this to happen in our neighborhood. Love it to happen somewhere else, somewhere more suitable, somewhere closer to where these people could get a job. these people could get a job. Going to have to be walking a long way. Plus, you're going to have to walk, probably shouldn't say this, so there's maybe two miles up the road, there's two meth trailers that the police have frequented. Have to walk right past that to get to a job on Big A Road. It's not going to work. They say this is not a business. It is a business. If they're paying for these services, it's, try to say it's residential, it's not. I guess that's about all I've got. I wasn't prepared to speak today, but thank you for your time. Please think about it. I am a Christian, by the way. I believe in God, and I have been, what, bullied online by some that think that maybe I'm not being Christian enough by giving grace to people, help there. That's not true. That's not true. I want, I want this to happen, I just don't want it in my neighborhood. I walk past there in, in pretty weather, I walk past there just to get exercise, as do a lot of people, and I want to feel safe. I grew up with an alcoholic. Well, I didn't grow up with him. He was my ex-husband, and it was fifteen years worth. And he could quote the Bible better than most preachers, and he was very violent to me, my children. Can't tell you how many times. Got on the wagon, said he was going to do better, and maybe thirty days would go by. It's great. Demon would come back out, and the house would get torn up. I was abused in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the item?
Hi, I'm Kathy Thompson. I live in, I have property in Circle East subdivision. I'm here speaking on behalf of many of the neighbors that have, that they are opposed to this condition, conditional use that we're here to hear today. I think y'all got a copy of our president's letter, and I'm just going to point a few things out on the letter, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I think you've heard basically from our neighbors and others that are in the community why we don't feel this is the proper place for this. It is a single residential use home. I was here during the meeting of when it changed from commercial to residential. The previous owner asked for to use a portion of the restaurant for his home. Apparently, he didn't get that, that memo didn't go through the community or through the county. He used the entire restaurant and converted it to a house. I think the way it was brought, he was going to tear half the restaurant off and use a portion. That's how it was presented to y'all back then. The portion was the full restaurant, which I feel like somewhere in our building code, that slipped, and it didn't get watched. But maybe back then we didn't have a building code, I don't know. I can't remember when that came into effect, but it wasn't presented properly. The, and that owner, what I understand, came to the county and asked if he could change and get this conditional use, and he couldn't because it doesn't go to the next owner. So, and I can't remember, but company, I'm going to call it a company because I feel like it's a business as well, bought the property knowing that the county did not feel like this was a proper use for this home. So I don't understand why you'd buy a piece of property knowing that the county didn't think it was a good use for it. But that's just my, my opinion. Circle East, this is part of Circle East subdivision and Spring Branch Circle. It is primarily consists of single family detached homes, many of which are lakefront And we, we feel like this is going to decrease the value of our homes. It is not inconsistent with the character, the design, or the intent of our neighborhood. Again, it is very close to Tigalo Baptist Church, and also the Spring Branch Boat Ramp, which has already been brought to your attention, that that is a family oriented community and used a lot for families, kids, and we feel like that's going to be not good for, for children and for families. And according to section fifty-nine, one-six-one-five of the Stevens County zoning ordinance, there's several standards of review that we feel like that you should consider in evaluating the conditional use for the permit of the application, and you got the letter with that. But there is definitely some uses, or that use does not go into being considered as a good choice for the county to put it. And again, I'm, you know, it hurts to hear, you know, about faith and Christianity and, you know, throwing that out there and making us feel like we don't believe in that. We do, I'm a Christian, I believe in getting help for people. I've lived with a brother that used it, used drugs, and it was scary. Some people get drunk and they get happy. My brother did not. I didn't know when, what it was going to be like when he came home. I saw my dad get hurt. I just don't want that in my community. So I understand that these men are, hopefully by the time they get there, they're in better shape, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to go backwards. And that's, that's where I enjoy walking, that's where I enjoy boating, enjoy, that's my happy place. And I really feel like putting this there is not going to be, it's going to take away from my happy place. So I would really hope that you consider not only how we feel, but also the county zoning ordinances and what you need to look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item?
My name's Angie Jordan, I'm at three fifteen Spring Branch Circle, which is a half a mile from this facility, and I just ask that you will stick to your denial that due to the unsafety of this type of facility, I think we've all in this room dealt with addiction by a loved one or a friend. I think we all know what it can bring, and we don't want that in our community, and I'm just speaking from my heart.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item?
I am Pam Berry at three-twenty-seven Dragonfly Cove, and I just want to say that my husband and I retired from up north in Fountain Coa, and, and came down basically to enjoy our retirement and to raise our grandchildren, and hopefully someday great-grandkids come down and enjoy boating, enjoy walking, which we do, again, right past the facility that we're talking about. And I just want to, I believe there's a better place for this facility. I strongly believe it's needed. Every community probably could use something like this, but not in a residential area, someplace where services in the community are accessible, where the police are readily available, it doesn't take time for them to respond if something did happen, and we, we want our community to be safe. So I encourage you to deny.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for item number five is closed.
I'm going to allow, there was a lot said, so if you would like a rebuttal time, I'll allow one of you to come up.
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank the man who provided the statistics for us. I would like to address the, the number one thing, we are not trying to make anyone feel like they are not Christian. We think we work together, but that is the foundation of our faith and who we are, so I just wanted to go ahead and put that out there. As far as work, we provide them work. They come work at a place called B and M Pallets, so we bus them or get them from the facility to that workplace, we bring them back. Mental health, I addressed it before, but I just want to reiterate, we do have a counselor come in to meet with them individually. We do nightly meetings. They do a, it's not twelve steps, but we do twelve spiritual principles that are fully based on Jesus. What we did is we didn't take God out of it. When N A and A A were originally founded, they were based on the power of Jesus Christ. And when the state got a hold of it, they took that out of it, and then it became a higher power, and that's when you saw it go from like a ninety-six percent success rate to we're having forty percent success rates. When you take God out of things, his power is no longer allowed to move. So we put him back in it. I hope that helps with the mental health and the support meetings. But there was a misinformation, he quoted Forever Faithful Ministries, some kind of, that's not us. Forever Faithful Investments is strictly a property holding company. That's all it does. It holds our properties. We have some rental facilities because rent is outrageous, and we believe everyone has the right to a decent house. So we offer properties to families at a reasonable rate, because I think a single bedroom apartment for eleven hundred dollars a month is insane. So that was our mission with that, and so that's why that is in that company name. It is not Forever Faithful Ministries and whatever the wealth thing is. Also, everybody kept saying we don't want this in our community, but then the lady referenced the drug dealer's two miles up the road, he's in your community. We don't want him in your community. We want him gone. We want him bankrupt. We want that meth out of there. We want him to come to Jesus. We want him to come to wholeness. We want him to be free, just as much as the men in our facility. If this goes forward, our plan is to build a fence around the property. They're under twenty-four hour surveillance with us. We have security cameras everywhere except the bathrooms because it's a bathroom, and you do deserve some level of privacy. We want to protect them from the community and the community from them. The way it's set up, my understanding, original intent was commercial use, it was a restaurant. So it was not a part of Circle East at the time, and it got grandfathered in when, in I think twenty-two, he stepped down to single family zoning. We do apologize for any misleading that the previous owner did. We didn't know about that. So we would like to apologize on that behalf, but we have phases. We emailed them to you guys, I believe y'all have them, if not, I have a copy for y'all. Their process is, we send them our contract, they read over it, and they decide, am I willing to commit to that? If they say yes, I'm willing to commit to that, they come in, they do a face-to-face interview with us, and we get down to the, like, this is just a synopsis, we get down to some nitty-gritty.
I'm sorry. You go ahead and finish your thoughts, and then.
Oh, it was supposed to be three minutes?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. But we get down to the nitty-gritty. We do background checks, we do drug tests. We just can't offer like DT medical intervention. We don't have the medical staff to do that. We've already addressed security from our standpoint, and like I said before, we had a hundred percent success rate up to date, not saying that will always be the case, but that's what we strive for. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. All right, any further discussion, questions, comments from the board?
Scott's point, there's been a lot said tonight on both sides, I mean, good points on both This is where the tough part comes on, on our side. Having to look at it from a whole, for the community, and speaking for myself, I'm wholeheartedly in for this program. I'm a Christian myself, I'm a deacon in my church. I was law enforcement, I appreciate what you do or have done. In Stevens County, yeah, there's, there is a drug problem. But again, we have to look at it from, from the community. So our role is to look at and vote on the location, right? We're not voting on the program, we're not voting on what you guys are doing. We're looking at the zoning and the property and the conditional use permit, what you're wanting to use the property for. So, so with that, unfortunately, I, I make a recommendation to deny.
Got a recommendation, recommendation for denial in a second?
I'll say it.
Got a recommendation for denial in a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And the process is, Christian may be getting ready to say this, but we are simply a recommending board, so this will now be carried over to the full county commissioners. Was it two weeks?
Yes, it'll be on the, the other day, John, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so on the twenty-seventh, you'll, this can go before, and then they'll have the ultimate say-so, so they don't always agree with us, but, so go make your case there as well. And so, thank y'all for your time, I really appreciate y'all being so civil. Sometimes these things can get a little bit out of hand, and I really appreciate the civility of all of y'all, and I really appreciate that, so. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.